I've taken off the, uh, we won't even announce it.
Well, it's on the agenda, so probably need to have some announcement. Just being taken off the agenda. If you want me to say anything, I can. It's not being considered.
Okay, we're timed, all right.
She said.
Okay, y'all. Okay, y'all.
You're doing the last thing up, the last thing.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the Monday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five City of West Point Business Meeting. We begin with a prayer from Councilman Joe Downs.
Let's pray. Lord, make us thankful for this meeting, for our responsibilities here for the City of West Point. We pray that our discussions and our decisions here tonight will be pleasing to you, to you, and will glorify God. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have two public hearings, three public hearings, the two thousand twenty-six proposed city budget. Actually, two, because the zoning amendment for property located at eighteen oh five U.S. Highway twenty-nine is going to be tabled for this evening. We'll take this up at a later date. So we'll just have the proposed city budget and the zoning amendment on property located along O.G. Skinner Drive. So we'll begin by opening the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-six proposed city budget. Does anybody have any comment, any public comment wants to come up? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing and we'll open up the zoning amendment of the property located along O.G. Skinner Drive. Anybody like to comment about that? Okay, we will close both the public hearings and I will call the business meeting to order. Council, you have the minutes from the October thirteenth to twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five business meeting in your information packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the financial reports for October are also in your information packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'll review the agenda. Tonight, we have, to begin with, a presentation from Penns Homes on the West Point Hill Development. And then we have, uh, one board and committee appointment. We have the diverse power outdoor lighting facilities agreement. And we have the zoning amendment for the property along O.G. Skinner Drive. And then we have the approval of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-five to twenty forty-five comprehensive plan update. Those are the items on our agenda this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, let's begin this evening with a presentation from Penns Homes. So who do we have representing today?
We have two of us.
Okay, well.
Presenting, hello, how are you all?
Good.
This is always the hardest part, right here with the clicker. Let's see if it works. It does, all right. Well, thank you all for adding us to the agenda today. I'm Talia Stafford Jackson. I have a lot of names. I mean, they're getting closer to getting it right or further away from it, I'm not sure. But, uh, we hopefully gave everybody a copy of the booklet here. We're not going to go over everything, but, um, just out of respect for time, we'll, we'll show most of it. Uh, we do have a good-looking group back here from our team, the developer. We have buzzy development that's represented. Um, also, we have some of our folks from the structural engineering team and, uh, a, a good number of folks from, um, Infinity. And then Chris will also be presenting, who is, uh, the founder of Overhead Studio, uh, the architectural firm. So we're just going to kind of hit the highlights of what we wanted to share with you all, including the team and just really supporting. We all came in. Some folks had to drive because, you know, the airlines aren't going to do as good a job as we're going to do with this. And so, uh, they were committed and took that eight-hour drive for the team. But the, the main thing that we wanted to make sure of, and we had a chance to meet a lot of people kind of as we've led up to things, is letting everybody know what the vision is and why, why now and why here. And my grandmother had the, the expression of, you know, preaching to the choir, but sometimes you need to preach to the choir, so we.
Amen.
Yeah, exactly, you know, because, you know, you need a little amen quarter. So let's just jump in. And, um, one of the things about us, and you guys can kind of look at it, but it's really, um, what's important is a lot of times people want to know, well, who's doing it? Not just what you're doing, but who's doing it. And so what we care about with buzzy is the community vision. That's something that, um, we care about. I'm the chief marketing officer of the team, and so I was, um, voluntold that I would be presenting. But, but I do whatever Bob and the rest of the team ask for. But it's also family root. So we've worked together for years, um, over fifteen years, and so we're really our family. And so it's one of those things where the band will not break up. We've tested it and we've, we've all stayed together for a really long time. Uh, forward thinking, so we really feel like in addition to just building something, we want to build something that also includes some, uh, zero, um, energies, some things that are going to be modern in the way that people can use them down the road, which is where Penns comes in, and then purpose-driven. But our three things to take away is we want something where families can thrive and neighborhoods can flourish. And then also, you know, homeownership is something about building generational, you know, wealth. So we want that to be a big part of it, too. And so why here? Well, you guys already know. But we'll just see if we have it right, then you can say, no, that's not why. But one of the things is we felt like we had so much support and it feels like the development is something that everybody wants. And the other part is there's already this tradition and the heritage and everything. We, we, when we came in, we were like, this is where I'd want to live if I could. And so I think somebody even said that they're gonna, they're gonna relocate here. So, um, if I could get my husband to do it, I would. But the rise in demand for affordable homes is the other reason. So with some of the expansions that are happening, there's, you know, people need somewhere to live. So that's the, uh, that's the preaching to the choir, but I'm sure you all already know. And our goals specifically are just four things. So that way, if you come back and ask us and quiz us, we should all be able to answer these four things. We want affordability with aspirational design, which we'll show you what they look like currently. Um, sustainable growth, so this is, uh, the phase two is where we're starting. And then I just mentioned it, but the community-first mindset. So there's a lot of things that are going to be built into this development that are community-facing as well and partnering with some of the community, um, businesses. We've already, we've, we've had at least four cups of coffee today, I'll just say that. And, um, and then legacy and innovation, which I just touched on, which is all about embracing some technologies and things like that. So that if we want to have things like the zero emissions and things that people would want to do down the road, the houses are going to be built for that. And so Chris is going to join me and going to walk through some of the renderings and some of the character of the neighborhood and some of the things that we took into account. And so, Chris, if you want to join. And I think we also have a video that we've sent over that can be queued up a little bit later.
Yes, so, uh, nice to meet all of you, council members, mayor. Um, I'm Christopher D'Amico, um, I'm the architect of record under my own firm, Overhead Studio. Uh, we're based out of Miami, Florida. I want to start off the second half of this presentation just by presenting on character, right? Character is not really something that can be bought and sold, right? It's not something that just happens like that. It's something that gets built up over time, that develops with a place and gets imbued with a sense of identity, right? So if we look at the character of what West Point is, right, it has a really fantastic Main Street. It has all these really wonderful brick buildings, brick paving, right? And that's something that draws people in, right? Not just, uh, subconsciously, right? But I think that when I'm walking down Main Street, at least as an architect, I say, wow, that's a really nice facade, you know? Oh, that's a really nice canopy. Oh, that's a really nice sidewalk. And I think that's, that, that is something that all of you as council members should be really proud of. Because you take a lot of pride in your Main Street and in your downtown. Now, one of the things that we want to do as a development is to help bolster your character and to continue the same traditions that you all have been working with for the expansion of this new, uh, center. So Ed, could you please, uh, queue up the video? So this video that you're about to see, to see is, um, a quick walkthrough of the development in which it takes you through not only the, the front door, right, which is going to be along West Thirteenth Street and, uh, Third Avenue, but also, um, around all of the other edges, including Roper Avenue and the center of the development. So this is the view along Third Avenue. One of the things that this development is doing is that along Third Avenue, you see that slip lane? We're basically trying to create, um, an alternate lane in which you're not parking directly on Third Avenue. So that we're still providing parking for units, guest parking, um, without having to, you know, change the existing right of way. And this is the view along, uh, Roper Avenue. So again, the same thing, in which we're carving a slip lane in with parallel parking. Thank you. So if you all want to look through the renderings, there are many screenshots, uh, from the video. But I just want to introduce the site just so that we know exactly what we're all talking about. So again, this is, uh, bounded by Third Avenue, uh, Roper and West Thirteenth Street. So it's two parcels, uh, that we're looking at. And I believe for permitting, we're only going to be submitting phase two for now. Uh, but these are just some of the renderings that you all saw. So this is really the entrance into the project, in which we want to use a symbol that is near and dear to all of your hearts, the symbol of the town, as this gateway, uh, through which you can walk through and then experience a number of, uh, beautiful green public spaces that are provided within the project. So at the very center of the project, you have a number of different pedestrian ways that actually service as the front of these townhouses, these townhouse units, um, that bring you towards the center. Now, again, looking along, uh, Third Avenue, we see that you have, uh, layers of lanes. So again, you're coming off of that right-of-way, and we're not putting parking directly on Third, but we're keeping it within the development. As well as providing a pretty generous landscape buffer with two rows of trees to be able to screen from the existing street. This is just a view through one of our pedestrian ways into the project. Um, and then here's a couple of views of amenities. So some of the things that we want to be able to provide to, uh, the home as well as the community is, um, a public playground and a pool uh, that can be serviced by the HOA, as well as grills, outdoor seating areas, and a community garden. So this is another view of that playground to the back that'll again be screened away from the units, uh, with landscaping so that, you know, we don't have people looking over into the playground. Uh, here's a view of the pool, view of the pool house. And then exiting from the pool house, you have a community garden in which, uh, currently we have about a hundred and eighty plots that are accounted for. So we're planning on building a hundred units of townhomes, which leaves a significant amount of, uh, other community plots that can be utilized by other members of West Point if they so choose. This is looking towards the center of the development. This is a, a nice gazebo feature that we feel like could be a, uh, kind of a, I guess, a logo for the project, right? But also a meeting place for the community in which you can program it for events, you know, people can take pictures there, get married, et cetera, et cetera. People love to, you know, program gazebos in all kinds of fun ways. Um, we're going to take care of mail onsite, so instead of, uh, individual mailboxes for townhomes, there will be a, a mail bank, uh, that's in the upper right-hand corner, the northeastern corner. Um, and then again, just to reiterate, we're building about a hundred total units, split between two phases of twenty-four units and seventy-six units each. Um, this is just more info about, you know, what goes where, which all of you can look through. Just to give a description quickly on the streets, uh, basically, everything is planned in a loop. So these are private driveways that are not dedicated right-of-way to the city. So those work in a loop for fire trucks and connect, uh, West Third Ave to our, uh, garages. Which all of the garages for the units, we have two spaces per unit. So that provides about two hundred garage spaces, followed by about sixty-five, a mix of parallel diagonal and pull-in spaces. So more than enough, uh, than is typically required for developments such as this. And then finally, in terms of landscape, uh, we're providing pretty generous landscapes, so we're trying to buffer, again, the edges towards Roper as well as Third Ave by providing multiple rows of street trees and plantings. It will not only make the street section better, but it'll actually, um, again, help screen from neighbors. Uh, we're providing about six different unit types, ranging from the size of duplexes to about five townhouses in a row. So part of the reason why we're doing this is, A, because of character, right? You don't want to see the same thing over and over and over again. So we really want to try to mix it up, so we're providing about six different building types that all are going to have different colors for each, not just building, but unit. So that gives it a little bit of liveliness, a little bit of character, that reminds you a little bit more of a historic downtown, right? You walk down, uh, West Third down here, right, and you see a green brick building, you see a red brick building, you see a black one, you see a white one, right? And all of a sudden, you get this kind of like nice rhythm, right, that like helps build up the character of your existing downtown. And then these are just a couple of street sections that look through, uh, alleys. So these are the alleys that service the garages, section through Roper. So again, showing that we're dividing that up and, uh, screening it with landscape. Uh, West Thirteenth, where we're planning on providing, uh, diagonal pa- parking, uh, which we had discussed previously with Ed and Dennis. Uh, that was a suggestion that they made rather than pulling in, that it's a little bit safer to have diagonal spaces. Uh, this is a section through West Third. So again, we're providing a pretty generous front setback and screening with more landscape. Pedestrian path, pedestrian path. These are the typical elevations of our five-unit, uh, facade. And you have to ask yourself, okay, what are we building these out of? Uh, this isn't going to be cheap stick construction. This is going to be made out of steel and faced with brick. So it's not going to be your typical, you know, throw it up and then see how long it lasts. This is really going to be made out of, uh, steel panel. And as well as, uh, new brick, which comes in a variety of colors, which again, we're using to help differentiate the homes and provide a unique sense of character for the development. Finally, in terms of schedule, uh, what the team is looking at estimating right now is that we've marked off this meeting, about two weeks from today, we will be submitting our permitting documents for all, I would say, seventy-six units for the first, or sorry, phase two, what we're calling phase two. Um, and that'll include basically all six building types that are plotted along that, uh, that first phase within the, uh, polygonal parcel. From that point, we are planning on beginning construction around April. Uh, so we're allowing about three to four months or so for permitting, um, in which we're going to try to permit the first, uh, phase two and then phase one, and then the amenities as a separate permit. And then from that point, I think it's going to take about a year for us to get everything up. So that's the plan. Are there any immediate questions from council members or mayor?
Joel, I'm sure you've got some.
There's a lot to digest here. Um, you've got a hill to get rid of. What are you going to, what's your grading?
So.
You're going to cut that hill down pretty good?
Yeah, so right now, the grading is at about forty-six feet, right, of elevation change from the middle of the hill all the way down. So we're cutting that to about twenty feet, right? We're going to use some of that fill, um, in other parts of the site. But generally, uh, we're going to keep the very topmost part of the hill at about twenty feet or so, and then basically step down from there with all of the units. Uh, we're not going to go above eight percent grade for any of the streets, so that provides, um, enough of a, let's say, grading challenge for the, for the fire marshal. But luckily, we're not going anything above that, so there's no need for, uh, you know, having to lift any trucks or anything like that.
What's your average square footage on these units?
Sure, so the average, AC or non-AC?
AC.
AC space, it is nine sixty times two, so that's eighteen hundred minus, it's about fourteen hundred for the small units. And then about twenty, let's see, about twenty-three hundred, I believe, or twenty-one hundred for the larger units. Yes. So it ranges.
What's going to be the basic, um, rental prices on these units? Sale prices.
So sale prices right now were, can I, can I share this? So sale prices generally are going to be, uh, starting around three hundred, I believe, or somewhere in the three hundred to four hundred. And then for the larger units, which are four-bedroom, uh, townhouses, are going to be more like five or six hundred, I believe.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, exciting stuff. Do what? Well, like you said, it's a lot to digest and we appreciate the, um, appreciate the packet here. It's very nice. And, um, I look forward to seeing it going up.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Two thumbs up there. All right, that's our presentation for the evening. We'll jump right into the agenda items. Who, who's taking the first one? The surplus city vehicles and equipment?
Uh, I am, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion to surplus city vehicles and equipment that are no longer in service, utility department, two thousand thirteen Chevrolet Silverado with a VIN number of one G C two K V C G nine D Z one two one eight eight zero. A nineteen ninety-nine Yancey Cat Vaco with a VIN number of four Z N twenty-seven ninety-three and a nineteen ninety-four GMC bucket truck with an Altech A five fifty Boom with a material handler. VIN is number one G M Z H I J five zero five five nine one. The vehicles and equipment will be placed on gov dot deals for auction.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second in admiration for the motion.
I didn't know what I was signing up for.
Thank you for those numbers and letters.
Uh, okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Are it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Downs, I believe you're taking the next item.
I am.
An easy one, I might have.
Yes, I did. Uh, I'd like to nominate our friend Larry Duncan to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, Councilman Patrick.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve a five-year agreement with Diverse Power Incorporated to operate outdoor lighting facilities along Keel Parkway, Keel Boulevard and Sorento Road. The outdoor lighting facilities presently consist of a hundred and twelve spun aluminum poles, a hundred and twelve, two hundred and fifty watt lamps, twenty-eight high-mass lighting structures and a hundred and twelve thousand watt high-mass slams. LED four high-mass at thirty-two thousand forty-seven cents, uh, per month per lamp. LED two standard output roadway at fifteen dollars and eighty cents per month per lamp. The total annual cost for all lighting is sixty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-eight cents annually.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Councilwoman Thornton, please.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of West Point to amend the code of the city to amend the zoning map and ordinance of the city so as to classify the used zone of real estate located within the city limits of West Point, Georgia, owned by the West Point Development Authority and located along O.G. Skinner Drive, and being a portion of parcel number zero nine four four B zero 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 four one K, consisting of approximately zero point six nine acres, more or less, to reclassify such real property from one L dash one light industrial district to R dash one single-family residential district.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilwoman Marshall, I believe you have the last one.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty-five through twenty forty-five comprehensive plan update that was prepared in a, in accordance with the minimum standards and procedure for local comprehensive planning established by Georgia Planning Act nineteen eighty-nine. The comprehensive plan has been transmitted to the Three River Regional Commission and the Department of Community Affairs.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any discussion?
I have one question about this, Mister Mayor. There is a commercial area that I'm wondering why we have it as a commercial area. And that is the, when you cross the interstate and it's all residential. Why, can somebody please tell me why that?
Is that down, uh, Sixth Avenue? Is that where you're talking?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the section down Sixth?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Ed, you want to, Ed or Dennis, you want to chime in on that? I think I have an idea, but I'd rather hear from you guys.
Oh, I believe in the last comprehensive plan, that was, that was decided that it would be commercial, so it's been in there for quite a few years. Planning Board had, had recommended that it be that, done that way. That's from my understanding, so.
We always, we had a lot of commercial downtown in West Point that has residential still here, living in, in commercial zoning, so.
We're not changing the zoning as of right now.
No, no.
We're just saying that this is a potential area of commercial industry. Is that what we're saying?
We're saying that if they want to rezone the property, it would be, it would meet our comprehensive plan if they rezone that to commercial, yes. But it's zoned residential as of now, so.
Okay, well, I'm just still scratching my head why we decided to make that commercial.
But you said it was like that before, before we did the update.
The last one I saw was not that way. When you compared the, the previous comprehensive plan to the one that we got now, you gave us a copy of that last one.
You're talking about same property or you're talking about different?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know where it went. I think I took it home. Yeah, here, there you go. It is all yellow. Previously.
Is that, is that the actual zoning map or is that?
Uh, it's a good question. I don't know. This is.
That's what it's actually zoned.
Uh, okay, so, well, uh, I don't disagree that, that an interchange could eventually one day be there. I would, it would happen in my lifetime, but.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't go that way in five years, if we decide that, if there's recommendation not to have it as commercial, we can do that the next update, so.
You'll be around five years. All right. Okay, we had a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that one carries. Um, take a moment for announcements, and I think our next meeting is December ninth. Is that correct? I don't have it in my packet. Oh, I must have jumped over that in the calendar then, um. So it's November 25th?
Yes. Correct. Tuesday, November 25th.
Okay, so our next meeting is Tuesday, November 25th at 5:30. Alright, what kind of announcements do we have this evening?
The Fall Festival, which was taking place this weekend by M.W. Lee Mortuary. We want to thank Penny, and she said that the city was absolutely amazing in helping her. Congratulations to all of those who were reelected. And also, want to thank everyone who purchased an ad for the Lambazite Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And we actually raised for scholarships and to help the community 30, over $30,000. So it was a success. And also, my chapter is also sponsoring, it's going to be at Greenwood Baptist Church on the 22nd, a soup lunching. So if you know any seniors that wants a soup, hot soup, that says the weather for it, just give me a call and we will deliver. And that's it.
We're also doing a food and household giveaway on November the 22nd. It's going to be off of MLK, I think it's 101 Martin Luther King Drive. But we're going to be giving away meat, canned goods, household items, toilet tissue, soap, things like that. So just let the community know.
I wanted to congratulate you on getting an experienced council for next year.
Oh! I want to congratulate you on all your hard campaigning work.
I want to thank the citizens for reelected me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for putting the sign out.
Alright, Thanksgiving morning, from 10:00 to 11:30, we'll be giving out meals, as we do every year. This will be the ninth year, so anybody who needs a Thanksgiving meal that day, come on by. Corner of MLK and 10th Street, and we'll be there at that time. Anything else?
And you are taking donations?
Well, I'm taking donations. You can go by Rogers BBQ. They're preparing the plates. There's a little red box. You can stick a donation there. You can get it to me, and I'll get it to them to pay for that food, so.
And he's also asking for volunteers.
Oh, yeah. Anybody who wants to come out and help pass out, come on out. Alright, anything else?
You're talking about passing out food?
Not passing out.
Not medically.
No, no. Alright, anything else? Alright, I need a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Second.
Second.
Anybody want to stay? Alright, good night.